Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 6th Board of Education meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Michael Cooper.
Charmaine Weidersinger.
Jody Monroe.
Lynn Lenhart.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Meredith Moriarty.
I just want to mention that Christine Beck had a family matter tonight and that Judy Kehoe is ill and not here as a result. I just want to mention that the meeting started at 6 o'clock. We went to an executive session to discuss a contractual matter and then we had the reception for our tenure employees tonight, too. Okay, the first item is the minutes. Are the minutes from the May 16th meeting? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Student Senate report, is there someone from the -- okay.
Hi, I'm Josh Howser. I'm the president of Student Senate. We have a bunch of things going on right now at the end of the year. First up, we have elections that started two days ago and the polls are closing tonight on a Google form. It looks like it's going to be a good group next year, so I think you'll have fun working with them. Also, we just recently set up the schedule for picking up the bread donations from Panera Bread in Glenmon for the summer. We're not going to bring them to the school to pack backpacks, but we're going to bring it to the South End Children's Cafe in Albany. Also, we'd like to thank the Friendship Singers, which is an a cappella group, for making a generous donation to the backpack program recently. We don't have a spring dodgeball tournament this year, just because of, I don't know, it was a really hectic end of year, so we didn't find a week to put it in. With the speed bumps, I've been working with Mr. Domell and Mr. Nolte to hopefully get those in for the start of next year and figure out a situation to keep the ones that are removable in for the wintertime. With the water fountains, the operations and maintenance team is going to buy one for the school and then Student Senate is also going to purchase two to put around. I know that a lot of students really like those water fountains and they're useful. And then I have a sketch of the courtyard between the B and the C wing, which where the Student Senate is going to be planning. Should I pass this around? We just had a motion today, actually, to purchase six picnic tables to put out there and we're hoping to make it kind of into a classroom situation where teachers could sign out to use the courtyard like they would the LMC and they could bring their class outside. But until then, it's kind of just hopefully going to be a spot where kids can go out during free periods. And this is kind of an ambitious plan of what it might be in the next few years to come. There's a little floral and sculpture garden down on one end, the classroom obviously in the upper right corner of there with maybe a whiteboard or something that teachers could wheel out. If you have any comments on that, we'd love to have some input.
Are you going to have pavers in that area?
To like get rid of the grass.
Yeah.
We're not really sure about what we want to do with it right now, but I think just for now, we're going to stay with grass and then figure out what to do next. Maybe, we were also thinking of maybe putting a shed out there, that way a lawnmower or something could be kept in the courtyard already, but.
In umbrellas, because probably you'll take those off at some point. Are you working with like Mr. Domell and maybe Mr. Nolte?
Yeah, we've met with Mr. Domell a lot about it to figure out the logistics, but I think we're going to purchase them hopefully before the end of the school year, maybe this weekend, and then get them set up, that way they can be used at the beginning of next year.
That's great. Any comments?
I have a couple of questions. On the bread donation and dropping, do you know how often you'll be doing, be able to provide bread for the cafe?
So we do it every Thursday. We pick up the bread at night and then drop it off Friday morning.
So once a week, you'd be able to do that throughout the summer? Fabulous.
Yeah, we did that last summer, too, and they really liked it. It was nice for them.
And on the speed bump issue, I oftentimes drop my daughter off on Van Dyke and the number of cars and the speed at which they're traveling in that back lot driven by parents would also be a concern. So I know you're focusing on the front lawn, for the front lot, but at some point down the road, if both education with parents, but also somehow reducing the speed there because it seems like it's worse than the front in terms of the speed and number of cars.
The kids actually, some of the seniors had a proposal, it was to not allow parents in the parking lots.
I think that --
But.
Police it, but because it seems like people race up to the cafeteria door, drop off, and then peel out and they're cutting off buses and everything else, so that would be a concern down the road.
Yeah, and I know at one meeting we brought up maybe getting speed signs to put up. I think that would also be a good idea, just to watch your speed in the parking lots because it's pretty crazy in there. Any other comments or?
I think the speed bumps are more effective than signs.
Yeah, I do, too.
Thank you for your leadership this year.
Thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Josh. Superintendent's report.
Sure. I know we have our tenure recipients coming up, so I have a couple of other announcements first. We have students who are being recognized for a film challenge and where's Ms. Presio? She's, so I'm going to ask Ms. Presio to come up. We have some students here tonight that I thought it was important to recognize, they're film students, and she's just going to explain how the students were participated in the competition and they're going to Philadelphia next week and the students are here tonight, so.
Yes, so I first heard about this challenge.
Yes.
Okay, good, I can't tell. I first heard about it last summer when I was at a workshop at the Omega Institute and I knew with the students that I had coming into the class that they would not only embrace this challenge, but they would excel at it. So they proved me totally right because we are going to Philadelphia on Sunday for the national competition and I'm very proud of them. For those of you that don't know what the 10-day film challenge is, it's a very intense exercise where student filmmakers across the country are given 10 days, 10 school days, to create an original short film based on requirements given to them on their designated day one. These requirements include a character, that character's backstory, a prop, a line of dialogue, and a genre that they had to pull from a hat on day one. And right from day one, all of these students that are here tonight that we are celebrating worked tirelessly for 10 straight days, brainstorming, writing, coming in early, staying late to shoot, to edit, and produce a film that they are proud of and so am I. So we submitted three films and two of the films were accepted in the New York part of the challenge. We went to the Kaufman Astoria Regal Cinemas to screen the films and the film entitled Anti-Ganish, which I practiced saying before I came tonight, won for best cinematography and they placed overall in third place in New York State and they were selected to go to the national competition in Philadelphia where they are competing against 20 other films out of 700 submissions, so we're very proud of them. It's a huge honor and they worked really, really hard. And I know on behalf of myself and my students, I want to thank Ms. Monroe and Mr. Domell for getting us transportation to both of these events on very short notice, so thank you for doing that. And if you have not seen the film, you can see it on the BCHS webpage.
Oh, cool.
So I would like to invite them by name up to be congratulated. So we have Jack Amidon, Jack Kaiser, Jen Jack, John Madison, and last but not least, the star, Ian Myers.
You may have to close the gaps, otherwise you're going to have our heads poking through. I know, I think you're hidden. Okay, how long is the film? Roughly?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, okay, thank you.
Thank you and I hope all of you enjoy Philly. Just a couple other things I wanted to mention is we did have one National Merit Scholar this year, Denali Relis, he's one of 2,500 students nationwide to win the scholarship and he was one of six Bethlehem students selected. And also, I'd like to recognize 2018 Best Orchestra winners at Profters, if you saw that. Our orchestra was selected as the best student orchestra for the High School Musical Awards. This is the second year in a row that we've been selected, so congratulations to our directors and our student orchestra and all of the other students who were nominated as part of the process. I do have a strategic planning update I wanted to share with the board, but I wonder if you want to do the tenure recipients first?
Oh, we do that first.
Okay. And that's my report aside from strategic planning.
And just before you do that, I forgot to mention, I talked to some of the participation in government students as I came in because I said this must be the last possible night that you can attend a meeting. So I just want to mention that you need to stay until 9 o'clock unless the meeting ends earlier. And also, there are signup sheets up front here for you to come up and sign or you can have a board member sign depending on what your teacher requires at the end of the meeting.
Tonight is our tenure reception. Before we announce the honorees, I'd like to thank our pianist, Nick Watson, in the back is a student of ours and he gave up his time. So thank you very much and Mr. Norman assured us he'll be around for a few more years, so we're looking forward to his performances. Thanks, Nick. Okay, so our honorees, tenure, it's nice to see so many of our teachers here with their friends and family. This is a really special event. Our staff here goes through a very rigorous tenure process, not only interviewing process, but also evaluation. And all of the teachers here this evening, I've observed several times and they're just fabulous and our students are very fortunate to have them as their teachers. So as I call up your names, if you could come up and get your certificate and then I'm sure we'd like to get some photos. So our first tenure recipient is Laurel Herrendine, who is receiving tenure with the Bethlehem Central School District for the second time, so congratulations, Laurel. Congratulations to Carrie McCabe, who's receiving tenure as an ENL teacher. Our next tenure recipient is Lindsay Murphy. Lindsay is receiving tenure as an elementary education teacher. Our next recipient is Laura Namavitz, who is receiving tenure as a library media specialist. Our next tenure recipient, Brittany Rogers, always gives me great, or has her students give me great compliments when I go in her classroom, so thank you, Brittany, is receiving tenure as an elementary education teacher. Congratulations to Kevin Shannon, who's receiving tenure as a technology education Our next recipient is Sarah Traumador, who's receiving tenure as an English teacher at the high school. And last but not least, I bet this has happened all your life, Sue. Sue Isquero is receiving tenure as a special education teacher. So again, congratulations to all of our teachers receiving tenure tonight. Thank you to all their families for the support and all of our administrators and supervisors who are here to show their support this evening as well. So thanks very much.
President of the board should be in there or standing in front of the board.
Do you want to act on that first?
Sure, sure. So that in case anybody wants to leave early and to ensure that they know that they're technically tenured, could I have a motion to approve item B 1 through, 1 through 5? Two of our people actually had been approved for tenure before, so anyhow. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations. I just wanted to provide the board with an update on the strategic planning process, where we are to date. So from our last meeting we had a few weeks ago, we took, if you recall, we had the three draft mission statements and the group took those three and came up with pretty much this except the last term there and I'll explain what happened. So the draft that the group left with was to educate, prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged citizens. And then Holly had mentioned toward the end of the meeting is maybe should we use citizens or not use citizens and another suggestion from another group was why not use community members and that was actually in one of the drafts. So the draft mission statement that I wanted to just update the board is to educate, prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged community members. From, I think, the discussions that we had, if we wanted to keep, if we want to keep our mission statement very succinct like this, I think the group generally felt that we needed to also include a vision as part of that and that we wanted to add a little bit more to the core values. But this is where we are, so if you have feedback on this particular mission statement, is this something that you think is appropriate, reflects what the community has shared with us? And I'll go on and then you can come back around if you have comments on this. So the next piece of this is the, should I move this? The timeframe. So we actually are on time, believe it or not. We had planned to develop the draft mission statement, define the areas within the core values, so we have the core values, we haven't really got to defining them at this point. We did meet recently with the administrative team, which includes all of the supervisors, the directors, principals, to look at our goals for the coming year and as part of that process, I asked that they keep in mind the strategic planning process, which we had planned to look five years out. So I think for what we'd like to do in this coming year, because we haven't finished the strategic planning process, but we generally know where things are going to fall in our goal setting for, for example, academics, we want to look at what does that look like five years out, what would that look like for next year? And then I'll bring that back to the strategic planning group and I think that will actually help develop our work in certain areas. So the goal would be this spring and early summer to do that work with the administrative team and review that over the summer. I did ask, I put out, or Brittany put out a doodle calendar for the strategic planning group to see if there was a time we could get together in late August where we could actually have a block of time of, you know, three or four hours. It's hard to do the work in a couple hours in the evening, so I think if we have the goals, some areas of goals defined from the administrative team, that group could actually get a lot done, so we actually might be a little further ahead in the fall than what the timeline suggests. We did look at several models of different strategic plans and the consensus of not only the committee, but the administrative team was they liked one particular model the best, so we're going to try and look at structuring, I think, our strategic plan after that model and we'll have some measurable outcomes. So the core values, this is kind of, we've been playing around with some different logos, include the four core values of academic, character, community, and wellness and this was a result of the work of the survey and the strategic planning committee really going through all of that information. And these are the values that we'll need to define more and where we'll set our measurable outcomes for five years out and then develop our action plans on an annual basis. And this is somewhat, I guess this looks like we tried to take a look at the different models and this was really what all the groups felt was a good model, where you're looking at what's the overall theme with academics? What does that look like when we're talking about curriculum, instruction, and assessment? What are the major strategies we would implement? And then if our strategies are working and that's where we would develop our measurable outcomes, whether that be, you know, three, four, or five of them? And then what are the data points we're going to be looking at periodically? So this is kind of a work in progress, but I wanted to at least provide the board with an update. I think that it's been a really productive year. We've gotten a lot done and it's helping us, our administrative team, to really focus on what matters most and then what, how are we going to measure them and if we don't currently have data points, how can we gather that information? These are the members who have been participating throughout the year, so they've, none of them have quit, so it hasn't been that daunting, I don't think, but.
Only replacements.
Well, yes.
Well, I think I would suggest that when the new board is seated, they consider, Lynn and I are obviously rotating off the board, is there any value in their eyes in us continuing as community members?
Right.
If not, that's fine, but I would wait for the new board to give any direction. I believe some of those community members have perhaps maybe have dropped out, I'm not 100% sure on that, but some of the attendance has been a little spied, so.
Yeah, there's been certain, but to my knowledge, they haven't dropped.
Okay, okay.
Officially.
Okay, so I would wait for any direction from the new board as to what our role may or may not, should not be.
So I don't know, Lynn or Holly, you want to comment further?
No, I'm really impressed with what the committee has done and come up with at this point. I think, I was really kind of leery at the beginning and I think there's been a lot of good work done and I think the discussion that has taken place, even in the small groups, I think has been really helpful and fruitful. So I think that even the process itself has been valuable, you know, and meeting with other staff members, especially the community people.
Just to elaborate a little bit on the idea of the mission statement and, you know, a vision or elaborating on the core values, we looked at some examples from other schools around the country and some of the ones that we liked the best had that very short mission statement, something that was really only a few words. And then the elaboration came later and we felt like that was a good model to go with, so that's why we did.
And I think this slide is helpful in that much of that will not be determined by the committee or the board in terms of the measurable outcomes and the major strategies. That really goes back to the district and the staff and teachers working in the district to identify those. But I echo what my colleagues have said about the work of the committee and also that mission statement, everyone had to give up something to get there.
Yeah.
Because we had three or four different, very different mission statements and I think the one that we settled on, everyone gave up something and everyone contributed something.
And that's why I think having the administrative team with the supervisors and directors looking at what are our goals for next year and what, if those goals are important for five years out would help the strategic planning committee to add to those or expand upon those in certain areas, so. But this is somewhat, I think, what the document would end up looking like. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, board report. Superintendent's report. That's kind of a mess. No, I know, but I'm just asking, board report, does anybody have anything they want to share with the board?
A couple things. I attended the Pops concert at the middle school last night, which was, which was great and it was a great way to end the musical year for the eighth graders. I also, last week was in Iowa with the Odyssey of the Mind team from Hammagill and I am proud to say that they represented Bethlehem very well while they were there. They competed against 55 other teams in their division and they came in 10th.
That's great.
It was great. There were kids there from all over the world and they, they had a buddy team of kids from Singapore that they got to know a little bit and cheer on and met kids from Poland and Germany, you pick a country.
What a great experience.
I think they were there. So it was a great experience for them and they did really well.
I attended the awards ceremony for the seniors and some juniors. It was well-attended and I'm always amazed at the amount of money that is given out every year. I didn't really get a true total of it, but I was trying to. Holly saw me writing down numbers and what are you trying to do? I was really trying to find out, do we know how much, what the total is?
I don't have guidance, I'm sure.
But it's a lot of money that is available if seniors apply for it.
Yeah.
Do any of those go wanting? In other words, very few people or one or two people apply or are they all well-applied for?
I think there's some that have limited people applying for them. I mean, I know guidance puts information out about it, but some kids don't. But I think there's a decent number to select from.
The other thing was that I got to enjoy Shakespeare again this year. It was a wonderful production. It was different than anything I had ever seen, incredibly creative, and every one of the students there were very impressive.
I just wanted to bring the board's attention to an athletic achievement of one of our students, Robert Davis, who some of you may remember from our last board meeting, he's an eighth grader and he presented about the kindness, Random Acts of Kindness Club. Well, he was just named to the National D Team in Luge and that has, that shows a real dedication to that sport, to have to travel up to Lake Placid. But the other thing that I thought was so remarkable about that is that his love of that sport was really fostered through the school. Several classes in Elsmere had a relationship with an Olympian, Aiden, I'm forgetting his name, Aiden something. He was competing in Luge in the Sochi Olympics and they were pen pals with him and watched his competitions as a class and rooted him on and that really inspired Robert to try it himself. So, and now he's on, you know, the National Junior Team. So I just wanted to say that really does show how you never know what is going to touch a child in a class and I just thought that was pretty remarkable. I also went to the Elsmere Senior Assembly, which I'd never been to before and that was a really wonderful presentation. The high school seniors came back and talked a little bit about their elementary school experiences and I think it was also, it was wonderful, I'm sure, for the students and parents to come back and see some of their old teachers and see their old school, but I also thought it was great for the elementary school students to see what they could aspire to because all the, all the high school students talked about their various achievements and what they participated in and I think it was a really great lesson for the younger students as well. well.
I am, I was also a parent at the Elsmere Assembly and it's always lovely to go back. So I appreciate the staff for pulling that together. I think, a couple of things, good, best wishes for athletes still in participation in competitions. I think a few other folks are still going on to future competitions at the state or potentially national level. So good wishes to them. The other thing is, I'm sort of astounded at the number of people who've been coming up to me in public because I'm retiring from the board and, you know, talking to me about the board. And none of them talk about the issue of diversity. And they'll say to me, we're losing a focus on diversity if, with your leaving the board, which I don't actually believe is true. I don't think diversity resides in a single person on the board. I know it's a priority of the district. I know it's a priority of the board. So although I have professional and academic training in social justice, it doesn't mean that when any of us leaves, that commitment leaves at all. All of my resources are available to Ms. Monroe should she wish to have them. And also what I would encourage all board members to do and the new board members is, a tip that I would say is get out into the schools, get out into the spaces and see and experience what you have there, who's there and who's missing and what are the messages we give. So that would be just a tip. For example, when you caught that word citizen, that was a great thing to do in terms of folks who may not be citizens of the United States but who are our students and our community members. So that's a great role modeling. And I encourage the district to continue its efforts. And I believe that we will never get there. And so if it's a finite goal and we say, well, we've achieved this, if we have this, I've been doing this work for 33 years and I believe that I will never get there. When I did Homophobia work with the National Women's Sports Foundation 25 years ago, we weren't talking about trans athletes. Things change, populations change. And if we're, if we're seeking to achieve and reach something and then say we have gotten there, for me, it is, it is not the reality. So best wishes and if I can be a resource, please. And I am totally confident that all of you will continue the hard and needed work in that area. So, and thank you for everyone who's wishing me well as I move on.
Anybody else have anything?
This one, I, similar to Elsmere, Slurones held their first senior assembly this year. And, and again, it was very nice. The kids have pointed out what their, what their favorite thing was when they were in fifth grade. And they were, you know, the kids in the auditorium were kind of laughing at what was important to them. But it just, it was really a nice recognition for, for the seniors. And again, you know, for the elementary students to see, you know, what, what they're hopefully going to aspire to. So to me, that was a great program. And then the only other thing is, Ms. Bitts started conversations around the state on education 2030. I know this is a little different from our strategic planning committee, but it, it, the present kindergarten class will be the high school class of 2030.
Wow.
And, you know, looking to the future and what might be facing educators, school board members, if school boards exist at that point, who knows? You know, things can always change. But anyhow, I could only attend the beginning of it. The commissioner is, was there and she's going to be at everyone. And Bill Daggett, who is a familiar figure in the area for doing workshops, he also was doing, going around the state also and doing them. And the materials are available, it was free because, well, there are sponsorships for it. And I meant to, before this, give a link to Brittany to put in the updates, you know, weekly updates. But I'll make sure that I'll remember to give it to her so that, you know, can look at the materials. Because it really is interesting, just, you know, to, and again, it's just to promote a conversation of what education might be at that point.
So, I want to get this straight. So can you, are they doing any other presentations or it's just the materials that are available now?
Well, they did the Albany one. They're going around the state.
Okay.
There are other presentation, well, there are three in, well, I think three were basically in May and June, and then three more in the fall. But they're all different areas of state.
Okay.
Just the first one happened to be local for us.
Okay.
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 Our presentation tonight is on the Lab School Program and Honors Overview. Do you want to introduce the-
Yes. So Mr. Lindrum is here as the Lab School Coordinator. He's going to come up. And I know Caitlin Leo is also here. She does the Humanities STEM Program. And I believe there are some students, yes, thank you for coming tonight, is, who are here to answer any questions you might have about some of their work.
So, this is entertaining for me, actually. Raise your hand if you're in the audience and you're a Lab School senior who's already done a full-period presentation with me. Yeah, so they've done this and the pressure's now on me. So now I have to, this is where the rubber meets the road, as they say. So I want to give you a brief update of what Lab School's been doing. I don't know how familiar you are with the Lab School Program or if you're familiar at all. But I'd also like, at the end of this, I'm going to give you some updates on what we're doing currently that's changed in the last couple of years. So this is from a recent retreat at Silver Bay. So our enrollment projections for next year are up from this year. This year we have 84 students. We had a bit of attrition in the class of 2020. But we have currently 25 students coming into the class of 2019. We have 18 students or more actually projected for the class of 2020. We have 18 plus for the class of 2021. And we have 30 students projected for the class of 2022. So enrollment's actually going to be up as many as six or seven students. And we actually right now are currently talking to a few students who may be a great fit for the program for next year. So we have goals of bringing the program close to 25 students per class. And we think that currently with the, with the program that we have and the staff that we have, we think this is definitely attainable. I think that 25 is a great number. We're shooting, we're going to start with 30 in each of the classes and try to maintain classes of 25 as we go up through the program. Because we think that a lot of students would benefit from this. So how does Lab School differ from the traditional school program? One of the big things is that the Lab School cohorts stay together. So the class of, this current class of 2018 stays together for four or five classes, technically. The four core classes, social studies, math, science, and English. And then for research class, which is, meets every other day, opposite PE, they're also together. This is different from the traditional school because the Lab School students have to see each other for at least half the day. Quite often, they're excited to see each other first thing in the morning. But if there is any tension that builds up during the class day, if there's anything that happens, it usually carries from one classroom to the next. So in a lot of ways, that's a challenge for a teacher. But as a class, it's a great thing because the students have the opportunity to build past those, those challenges. We think that the students grow socially because of the, the fact that they can't run away from problems. If there's a student or a group that they're having difficulty with, they have to face it. And as teachers, we work them through that. So interestingly, they become, by the time they're seniors, they become great friends, pretty much with everyone in the class. And they start out as a very diverse group of students. It does add some challenge in the first few years as students are starting to figure out their role and understand each other's strengths and weaknesses. Lab School is a little bit different in that it requires three years of high school language versus two in the traditional school. The electives are taken with the traditional school. So Lab School students are taking the top five courses in Lab School. And then they're, they have effectively three and a half periods a day that they can take electives if they can fit into their schedule. One of the bigger challenges that we have with scheduling Lab School students is the course have to meet at specific times because they're with a group. So it makes it a lot harder for them to get into the elective courses because they may only have a free period, first, fifth, and eighth period, for example. And so they actually, they do have the opportunity to take courses outside of Lab School so they can interact and have that traditional school experience. And then, and basically, they can take anything they would like to take as long as they meet the prerequisites and it fits in their student schedule. So we have students that take AP Psychology or they may be, may be taking some AP courses or even just electives that they're interested in. Our seniors, differing from the traditional school, we do 175-hour internships, a little different, a little bit longer than the, I'm sorry, the, I'm going to say the wrong one. But the, the other internship program that's offered through the school.
CEIP.
The CEIP. I know, I want to say OCIP, but I know that's not the right one. The CEIP internship is about 70 fewer hours. But ours actually carries a little bit more credit with that. I kind of discussed with the students recently, do you think 175 is too much? And they said absolutely not, keep it at that. The interest, they, they develop a different relationship with the mentor after a period of time. And we have students doing some really interesting, this is just this year's, and just a few of them, off the top of my head, we have like consulting, working with Paul Tonko this year. We have a student at SUNY Polytechnic over on, by SUNY Albany and did a really, really complicated internship program this year with a really advanced study, working with Dr. Menendez and one of his teaching assistants. We have students at the Albany Art Room. We have a student who's written multiple articles for the Spotlight. We have students who did, I know Greg is here, he did YMCA Youth and Government. Adam's over here, he did his with the Office of Paul Tonko. Zane was working with Public Defenders. So these guys have done some great things and they put in tremendous hours. And they've learned a lot about career paths that they are interested in. And I think in a lot of cases, they found that these are career paths that they, they want to pursue. More often than not, they find out that this is what they want to do. In research class, every student in Lab School is expected to participate in research class. All students have to write papers. They write one their ninth grade year, they write two their 10th grade year and 11th grade year. And then the senior year, they write one presentation related to their internship, one paper, one presentation. The paper, by, by the time, we build up. So they start with a five-minute to six-minute presentation in ninth grade. By the time they're seniors, they're presenting for 20 minutes on their topic, 10 minutes on the internship, and then a question and answer session afterward. So they're spending quite a bit of time in front of the group. But I'd also say they're pretty confident at what they do. And most of them could probably come up right here now and finish this for me. I don't imagine they'd want to volunteer, though. We, we're planning on a few field trips for next year, similar to what we did this year. We're, we're going to Camp Chinjukook in YMCA in September. It's a team-building activity where we go up and students actually kind of work in mixed age groups to get to know each other. We do a lot of different team-building activities that are either through Chinjukook or some of our own personal planning. We bring up guest speakers for outside education. So on the second day of every one of our three-day trips, we bring in professionals from around the community who can come up and speak to different professions. And I think, I used to think of it as a way to expose students to different career opportunities that are out there. So we've had everything from MRI technicians to, to people who train therapy dogs. In October, we'd like to go to the Met for a day and do a New York City trip. In November through February, we usually do one to two theater trips. In the past, we've worked them into different things. We actually went to the Spectrum a year ago to see Hidden Figures. And we, we had a little discussion and a speaker on, on race relations in the country. So we like to try to do something that's, it's kind of a current event topic through November through February. In March this year, we'd like to go to Baltimore, Williamsburg, Richmond, and do the Historic Triangle down in Williamsburg as well as maybe a Science Museum in Richmond on the way back. And then in May, we'd go back to Silver Bay at the end of the year to wrap up. We do some more team-building at that point of the year. And it's also a great time for us to just, you know, kind of encourage students to build their self-confidence. We are looking at a few fundraisers. I know one of the big concerns is that the program costs students quite a bit of money. And we actually have a row individual, the left-side fundraiser actually all are individual fundraisers. We have students who've paid for their entire DC trip this year out of fundraised money through doing either the fall flower sale, the holiday car wash, or any combination of those sales that are above. We also do a large Hoffman Car Wash whole-group fundraiser that benefits every student in Lab School. That fundraiser raises a significant amount of money that we're able to apply for scholarships, to scholarships or S scholarships to students in the fall. So if parents ask, you know, I'd love to be in this program, I'm not sure that I can afford all of the trips. We look at how much money we have, how many people ask for scholarships, and we try to accordingly appropriate money in the right directions. We also encourage students to do these fundraisers because they can actually raise more money than, than they'll need in an entire school year through these fundraisers. The other, there's sort of a hidden benefit with fundraisers, too. I personally think that students learn a little bit about marketing, salesmanship, being able to, just the confidence that it takes to walk up to adults and try to propose a sale. So I think that's also a small portion of, of that.
What about the Brooks Barbecue? Is that-
Right. You were mentioning fundraisers and you had a picture-
I wrote the wrong word up there. That should say Brooks Barbecue. That's my mistake. See, I, I didn't know if I proofread it well enough. Yeah, so Brooks Barbecue, that is one that actually benefits the whole group. So that's the one on the right-hand side. That's a whole-group fundraiser. The Hoffman Car Wash ones, actually all of those fundraisers are great because they don't actually charge a premium for the products. They actually charge, for instance, M&amp;K Greenhouses is the greenhouse that we use and Hoffman's Car Wash. And they actually charge the same amount of money for the fundraised products as they do to the consumer off the street. And we get about a 50, 40 to 50% benefit from each of those fundraisers as well. So a Hoffman's Car Wash, for instance, costs $10 and we actually get $5 out of every sale. So students can raise a tremendous amount of money that way. And there are actually, a few of them are shifting towards online sales, too. So it's a lot easier for students to market those to family members. Our community presence, right now, we have students, I will, well beyond these numbers. We have 84 students doing 15-plus hours of community service, which I think is one of the great things about the program. In May, about a month ago, I brought students to the I Love My New York Parks Day at Five Rivers, figuring it's the closest park. We had about 15 students there. This is just an example of students that were working to clean up invasive species. We have students planting plants. I wrote down 1,250 hours, give them back to the community. But we have students who have done 100, 200, 300. We've had, we had students who did 500 hours of community service last summer in Haiti. So it's a huge part of our program is that the students, by the time they're seniors, have done three times the community service of the average high school student who's done their 20 pick hours for participation in government. So we feel like this is a huge stand aside for our kids. It really makes them stand out from the rest of the general population. And it also is great because they're able to give back a little bit to the community that they're, they're asking from, too. The Press Club, we had some fantastic Press Club speakers this year. We try to get three of these in, or four of these in a year. They basically have brought some great ideas into our classroom. We have classroom teachers who are bringing in guest speakers. But we also do these whole-group presentations. And they've inspired us to do some different things as well. Steve Hartman is on the left-hand side. And he, he's a CBS News correspondent. He was actually brought in by one of the parents in the parent group. He is, he was fantastic. And he talked about one of, some of his best stories. And he inspired us to create a program called the Butterfly Grant Program. We had three, three groups of students actually create a butterfly grant that they were able to use to give back to their community. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. We also had Fazana Saleem Ismail in the top right. And she, she actually came to speak to the group about Islamophobia and the fact, and try to dispel some of the myths that people have about her religion and culture. So we've had some really great presenters throughout the year. We also bring the seniors back from the previous class right before the holiday break in December of a year. And they talk about how Lab School's benefited them. And most of them will, they'll share with us that they have written a tremendous number of papers. And they are just extremely confident in their paper-writing and presenting skills that they need all the time in college. They're, they're, you know, most of them have expressed that they write three to four papers a week. And they can, they can write one overnight if they need to because they, they know exactly what the expectations are in the paper. So they've expressed that that's been a tremendous skill that they've been taught. In the last two years, we've tried to add a few things to the program. And I think that, sort of meeting the needs of our population as we go. We have a, we started a mentoring program last fall that's actually going pretty strong right now. Because of the internship hours and, I'm sorry, the requirements for the community service, we have, we've started pairing up seniors and juniors with students who are in need of help. And we used to have senior buddies. But this is actually a student who's looking for internship hours or community, sorry, community service hours. So we typically take a senior or junior who's strong in a subject. They actually fill out a form online. And I will take a student, after we usually have a parent meeting with a freshman or sophomore who's struggling, and I'll bring in a senior or junior to pair up with that student. And they will actually text each other. They'll find a time, they'll meet after school. And we have students who have 15 to 20 hours helping out other students after school, doing this kind of thing, one-to-one. And the nice, the benefit of this is that the tutor isn't just a tutor, but it's a Lab School student. So they know about the teacher, they understand the assignments and everything. And that regard makes it easier for them. We started doing butterfly grants this year, which will continue next year if we can continue to fund them. They're fantastic. We were able, we gave three groups a $50 grant from the Lab School Parent Fund, effectively. And this was inspired by this Chris Rosati story, a guy who was dying of, I think it was ALS. And he gave two, two young ladies a $100 bill and said, do something great with this. And so we, we actually did. And I don't know if you've noticed, some of the donation boxes outside of the main office over the last few weeks. But those are two of our, our different butterfly grants. One student set up a giving tree, which was a tree of necessities for the homeless in Washington Park. The second was a Cause for Pause created by one of our inspired freshmen. And she collected, she's collected, she has two boxes, one here and one at her dojo, where she goes every other Saturday and collects donations for the Albany Hudson Humane Society. And then the third one is actually a- And then the third one is actually a school in the Bronx Public School. I don't remember, I forget which one it was. But she's actually collecting needed goods and things for that school. She has a family member that works there and they were kind of sending some things that direction too. So it's kind of nice because we've been able to kind of extend our reach a little bit beyond the school boundaries here. We have a student council and we've had student input meetings in the last couple of years. So we actually have meetings regularly where students can come in and give input on things they'd like to see changed in lab school. We would like to think that students have some say in what we do, which things we do on field trips, the different activities that we do and do and don't do, and what they'd like to see more of. The seniors quite often also plan the community meetings that we have every other week on Mondays. We also, and this is actually started by Mrs. Leo, the Research Writers Workshop. And after once a week right now, towards the end of the semester or each semester, we have seniors and juniors who volunteer their time to come in on Wednesdays and Thursdays and help underclassmen writing their papers. It's, at this point, it's sometimes difficult for a teacher who has maybe 16 to 25 students in a research class to see every single part of every paper. So we feel really comfortable that we have students that can really help them out in the meantime and give students some positive direction. So it's a writers' workshop and it's kind of great to just see students able to collaborate and help each other out. And then finally, we have, in the last two years, the creation of the STEM and Humanities and Research Honors Courses. And these are really a great addition to lab school. We used to have, and we used to do a little bit of extra in the lab school so we could have science honors or math hon, I wasn't, I don't think we did, we did math honors, but we had honors, but it would be an H next to the class and it didn't really mean a whole lot. The conversation was started by Dave Rounds. And working with Dave, we sort of, we came up with a way that students could sort of direct their own interests and take their, take their interests and sort of run in the direction that they wanted to go. And we have allowed them to explore things that they were interested in, that they wouldn't normally spend time on or get credit for. And that's really been one of the most interesting things that we've added to the program because students have done some, some really awesome stuff with the information that we've given them. So we've sort of given them a platform to be able to learn anything that they want to learn. And we'd always been able to do that through the research class, but now we can go one step further with, with actual science and humanities and a teacher present sort of to direct that in a specific direction. So I think that concludes my formal presentation of the lab school itself. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have about lab school. And then we'll go into the presentation on STEM and Humanities.
Just had one quick question. You mentioned that there, it sounds like there is a high cost to participate in all of the trips. Do you have approximately per person what it ends up costing?
It's right around $1,200 to $1,400 per year. But we have, as I said, we have, but most students can actually fundraise that entire amount throughout the year. We have students who've paid for an $860 field trip to Washington DC with fundraised money.
What happens if they're not able to fundraise the amount that is needed?
If they've asked for a scholarship and if there's scholarship money available, I'm glad to provide typically up to about $200, which would cover the majority of the trips. I'm going to jump back here a slide so I can just show you really quickly. I think it's this one. I'm all over. The actual, most of the trips are actually right around $200 or less. The only one that's actually more is the large, the four-day trip to one of the large, big cities, like in this case, the Williamsburg trip for next year. So in the last couple of years, we've been able to provide scholarships to students to the YMCA retreats. And the only thing that students would therefore have to skip would be the four-day retreat. We've, this year, we brought 80 students to Washington DC and four students had to stay home. But that isn't necessarily all because of cost either. There were only, there were a couple of those students who were actually able to afford the trip but had other obligations. For instance, a hockey tournament.
Athletes.
Yeah, sometimes.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. On the slide number three, where you talked about the language, two, three versus two years, is that an additional level in a year or is it two years spread over three, two years of a language spread over three? How does that work?
Actually, it's a great question. So there's a lot of discussion about lab school and the amount of work that students do. And with the addition of the required research course, it does add a little bit of extra work for students in lab school to do. And the language requirement has been there from day one of lab school. And with the transition of language out of lab school, we've had to change, we've had to think about this a little bit. And working with Marissa Bell, I have, we've decided that, you know, the three-year requirement really sets lab school students apart. I mean, the expectation is that these are well-rounded learners. So we expect all lab school students to do three, three years of language because we think that it produces a better graduate, a stronger graduate with a well-rounded education. So it is actually three years of high school language. It doesn't specify what language, but in a lot of cases, many students are jumping to the advanced language in their junior year, which is basically a college-level language, which could, they could actually take an AP exam at the end if they chose to.
So each year is a level of language?
Yes, yeah. It was a little different in the past, obviously, so.
That's my thought.
This is a step above. So this makes it a little bit more challenging for a student who might come into lab school that is lower in a language level. They may have a more difficult time getting through three levels of language in high school. But we tend to find a way to get them through it. But it does add extra challenge to them.
And slide number four, when you're talking about the number of presentations, I don't know, that's way too small for me to see, but I think you said something about six presentations.
Oh, yeah, that's, I hear it's like.
Six presentations over four years. Now, some of those presentations, it sounded like freshmen were presenting to their, they're not all before that, because I've sat on that board of examiners. There's not six presentations before, or is there, before Board of Examiners? I mean, it sounds like there's a.
Oh, yeah, before, well, the Board of Examiners for freshman year is interesting. We try to keep it a little, we try to keep it a little bit lower pressure for the younger students. So in freshman year, it has always been the teacher, of course, and another lab school teacher. And typically, you bring in two seniors. So we don't want to bring community members in yet. We're, we don't want to put too much pressure on the young students. They have developed a lot more confidence because they've done tremendously more presentations to their classmates based on the project, the project-based learning. I know in my class personally, my students probably do four or five presentations a year at least through different projects that we've done. But we don't want to put too much pressure on the students at that point. They still will take it very professionally. They'll dress professionally. But the panel doesn't consist of community members.
Sure. No, I wouldn't suggest that either. I was just trying to clarify for myself. And the last question is the internship. Are those hours done after school or are they, when you're talking about the number of?
That's a great question. So they are, we, because of the number of hours, we've allowed students to start doing these over the summer. But we only allow them to do half because we'd like the students to be able, at their internship, when they start to write the research paper. And many of them have to be. The research paper is actually based on research that's been done at the internship. In the last two years, we've transitioned from primary research, from secondary research to more primary research. I know that Ms. Leo actually teaches first semester in research. They do secondary research where they're looking through different sources to compile a paper based on other people's research. And by the second half of junior year, we have them switch to a primary research paper where they'll do a background on the paper. They might have four to six sources on the paper. And then they'll actually create their own methodology and collect their own data. By senior year, we have probably half of the students who, I'm letting them choose between the two formats. And it actually has worked pretty well. We're allowing students to do either. And it's about half the students have actually chosen a primary research paper and done research at their internship.
Okay. And that's, takes place after school?
So what's happening typically is lab school students have eighth period free if the schedule works out correctly. And then they can leave after seventh period and get their hours in. Mathematically, if there's 40 weeks to the school year, I keep doing this math, I picked on these guys earlier this year for this. But if you're trying to do 175 hours in 40 weeks, they have to do four to five hours a week. So what they are able to do is typically they can leave at about 1:30 with eighth period free. They can go to the internship for a couple hours a day and come back by 3 o'clock for sports. Or they can work in a schedule where they can get to their internship. Quite a few of them probably put in some 40-hour weeks over vacation weeks.
Great, thank you.
I'm just curious what the biggest challenges you find currently with the lab school and what's sort of on your wish list of things you'd like to be able to do?
I think I'm getting my wish list. Right now, we just have a really solid team of teachers completely dedicated to the program. The district's been able to hire teachers specifically for lab school. And that really makes the biggest difference in the world. To have teachers who are fully dedicated to the program, who are interested, who want to put the time in afterwards to prepare new activities, to come up and, you know, kind of rehash old ideas and come up with new trips. I think that's one of the best things. In terms of my wish list, I don't know that I have one at this point. I can probably come back to you later with an answer to that.
Next meeting.
I mean, personally, I wish that I could fund every single student for field trips, but I don't think that's feasible. There has to be, I mean, some accountability for cost. I mean, the, for instance, with the scholarships, I'm proposing possibly next year, having students who ask for scholarships do a little bit of fundraising so that they can kind of counter the cost of the fundraising. But for the biggest, that's probably the biggest challenge. I think that, that I would, I'd try to, you know, how do we pay for certain students? We have the barbecue, but at the same time, I'm concerned about the cost. I mean, personally, I have three kids. I understand what it would cost to try to put them through the program. So, you know, trying to figure out ways to make that more affordable for students would be my biggest wish. But I think with the fundraising, I think we have, we have a pretty good system in place.
Any other questions?
I will say that without disrupting classes, board members have attended classes at the lab school. I know Mike and I used to go and, I remember years ago, sitting in the science classes. And even this past year, I met some of the new staff. And again, making appropriate arrangements so it's not disruptive for the class. If you haven't been in a lab school, haven't been there recently, or if you're an incoming board member, I would encourage you to make arrangements so you can be there and see. I think I saw a community meeting in three classes this past year. But I know in past years, I've gone with other board members and it's just a unique, we've also gone through some of the high school classes too. So it's, you can sit in on classes and it's a really interesting experience. You just have to make the arrangements so that you don't distract the students.
It's a different experience. We actually, for instance, we had a parent meeting on Monday night and we asked a few of the seniors to come in. And five of them came out of, you know, the goodness of their heart and shared their differences and their experiences and how they think about the lab school differently from the traditional school. And it's a different experience than the traditional school. And I think the teachers will share the same thing. The lessons are very different. We've had students who have actually taken, because of scheduling conflicts, have taken the same class with the same teacher, but out of lab school. And it was a completely different experience because of the fact that they just don't have that common bond, that, the relationship that they've developed over the three or four years.
Did you have a Board of Examiners this year? Because usually, we would get an invitation to serve on that.
We actually, we had one in January and we have one coming up in two weeks. Actually, it's next week. We start next Thursday. But we have a new parent taking that over. So it may be that they didn't reach out to the same people. We're trying to, it's, we have attrition, obviously we have not attrition. We have parents who graduate out every year and we have to find somebody else to fill those shoes. And quite often, that's difficult. So sometimes the, maybe the old emails get lost or whatever.
Well, it's just, it's just, that's a good experience also, to serve on the board and see what the, you know, projects look like. And, you know, it gives you a, you know, a great feeling of what's going on in the lab school. So, you know. Just so you know, if you sign up for that, you have to be ready for papers to come in. You have to read them, assess them. If you have a busy May or June, just be sure you're signing up for something that's going to take a lot of time and energy, which is well worth it, but I just.
I just got, I just got my papers dropped off to me.
Oh, okay.
It's been a busy, it's been a busy May, right?
This is your second time?
I think the past couple of years have done it.
Because I think at least three, I don't know if Lynn's done it, but I know Charmaine, Lynn and I have sat on numerous boards. And it's a worthwhile experience.
It's going to be, it is, and I think it's going to change throughout the years as we go too. I mean, I think that sometimes, we've had a bit of a transition and I think that our papers are stronger now than they were in January. And I expect next year to be stronger than they were, you know, the previous year.
Yeah. And they're high school students. I mean, so sometimes when people have talked about research methodology, you know, you want to push, but you also have to keep in the context that they're.
Yeah, they're 15.
Yeah. I'm cruel of your people.
Dave, at, at one point before the change, the multiple changes that were made in lab school, there was a, basically, an 80 was mastery. And that has been out of lab school now for a number of years. How has that affected lab school?
We've, we've discussed this quite a bit with students. I've discussed it with teachers too. It's, you have to look at who would not be in lab school right now had we, if we went back to the 80. Or which students would have to be bumped back to the traditional school because of it. And I understand that the 80 brings, I think it attracts a different student to the lab school. So by removing the 80, we've attracted different students. We've attracted students that are looking for a different experience and not necessarily, we haven't attracted quite as many of the honors students in the past. But I guess that's changed a little bit for this coming year. It would look like we have a very strong class coming in. The biggest thing with the 80, I'm not sure that it would change a whole lot if we brought it back. There are, when we first talked about getting rid of the 80, parents were concerned. Parents of students who may not be able to maintain the 80 but were strong, hard-working students, felt like that would be unfair to remove their kids from the program. I feel that still, that's still a concern of mine. If you went back and you said students have to maintain an 80, I think that students that benefit tremendously wouldn't get the opportunity to be in the program. That's a personal opinion though. So it's changed a little bit of the face of like, of who's, I think, maybe in the program. But I still think that it still serves a purpose. And because we don't have that 80, it opens up the lab school programs to many more students.
So what is considered mastery in lab school now?
I don't know. We don't actually, I mean, it'd be the same as the traditional schools in 85, but we don't have mastery. Students have to basically maintain a passing average. To fight that this year, and especially next year, we're actually focusing on a mandatory after-school program. So sort of a volunteer to come after and work with a mentor if you can't maintain an 80 in a class. So rather than removing kids from the program, we're actually going to put a little extra pressure on them. Have them come in, we meet with a mentor once or twice a week until that grade comes back up to an 80 and then let them go.
So in a, in a sense, you're sort of encouraging them in a positive way to, to come back to that 80?
Yeah, exactly. Without making it mandatory.
Well, I, and I.
It's a creative solution.
Yeah. I don't have a kid in lab school. I've been on the Board of Examiners. I've been in a few classes. I would trust the staff and the students. A number's a, I don't want to say a number, I don't want to say it flippantly, but a number is a number. And if a student maintains a number that passes the class and can exhibit that he, she, or they have a firm understanding of the knowledge and the way that they process information, I mean, I've learned a tremendous amount being on this board about how people process information because of our work with special ed, but also with all of our students, that I would trust that the staff are guiding students to do their best, to work their hardest, if there are issues that you're addressing those issues. And that there's a wide way of, range of thinkers in that school and a wide range of achievers who are passing. And I don't want to, I obviously don't have the lot, the years of experience Jonathan has at it. But I would trust that that's an evolving issue and that the folks in lab school, parents, teachers, and students can work that out.
Absolutely. And you actually touched on a really important point, that we do have students of just tremendously varied levels. So it does add an extra challenge to the teacher, which we might not have had four or five years ago. But the other students that may be struggling are still, they're still bringing in a different perspective. They're also maybe the first ones to ask a question that someone else was thinking. And so they have, they have a place in the classroom. So. Shall I move on to STEM?
It's more on the honors.
I invited a few lab school STEM students to come and join me, but I think most of my students this time are in 11th and 10th and 11th grade. They were a little nervous. I think they were going to bow out of this one. But I do have their projects. So the idea of the STEM course was really, I don't know if I want to read this or not. The concept of STEM, to me, is a way to actually use all sciences and mathematics together to solve problems. So as I said here in the middle line, no science, technology, or engineering can exist without math and vice versa. So the intent of this course is to pose challenges to students that can only be answered or solved using research and intuition. I've been throwing out challenges to students and seeing how they respond to them, basically. been throwing out challenges to students and seeing how they respond to them, basically. And then it evolved from there. So students are gonna use math, analysis, scientific inquiry, engineering, design, and is appropriate to post questions and seek answers, develop solutions. They understand relationships and common themes that connect mathematics, science and technology, and apply the themes to these and other areas of learning. So when the first semester came around, I spent most of the summer trying to come up with different ideas. And I was just, what can I do that would be really out there, something different? Because I've been teaching life science for the last 15 years. What could be more fun? And I thought of, the first, actually, the first semester, I came up with some new things. And it ended up being, it ended up being something completely different. So Mr. Rounds and I worked on this. It's a, STEM is a little bit different than humanities in terms of the actual points, but I think that's just a personal preference. The goal, the students actually meet with the teacher once per week during free periods and assess progress or work on assignments or challenges in the class. They get 50 points over the semester for attending weekly meetings. The students then work independently to complete the challenges. So it's in addition to the traditional class. And it shows up on the transcript as STEM honors, the Lab School STEM honors. They are doing a tremendous amount of work outside of the classroom, but it's everything that they want to do. And that's really the great thing about it. So for a total of 500 points at the end of the semester, that's what they're scored on. The assignments of, they can be anything, and that's the great thing. On the top, I actually put independent study. It wasn't one of my initial ideas, but a student named Rachel Antonucci came to me and she said, "I really want to do this." And I said, "Well, I didn't develop a curriculum for that." But she's, and she's, she kind of convinced me that that was the point of this course, is that if she had, if a student had an interest, they could go in that direction and they could explore that and they could get credit for the course for that. So what I have is actually a proposed, assignment proposal forum, which is like, it's like a grant application. And students fill it out. They tell me what they're gonna do, what their learning objectives are, and then they produce the assignment. So we had some really great things. Like, for instance, we had an astronomy night where a student actually proposed, "Let's get telescopes. We'll show students how to use them. We'll have everyone download the Skyview app on their phone. We'll actually find things in the sky." We actually set up in the parking lot on the far side of the baseball field. Mr. Klugman came out and helped us out. And then it got overcast and clouded over. And we looked at the satellites and the radio towers over on the, on the escarpment, but upside down. But the kids actually, I mean, they got to use the telescopes and did different things. Rachel had this idea where she wanted to do a star chart. So she actually took aluminum pie plates and she poked holes in them to match like the actual star constellations in the sky. And then she put a bright flashlight underneath it, projected it on the ceiling and did her own like laser constellation show, which was, it was fascinating. So the idea was that students, if they had an interest, they could go into that interest. So we started with computer science and robotics the first semester. We actually used money from the lab school parent fund to buy Lego robotics kit. We have students building VEX robots. We then jumped into physical challenges the next semester. This, this year, we did life science studies, including behavioral studies. And I have specific examples coming up. And so each one of these things, students would actually do. And I threw out great ideas sort of to get them started. And then they would go from there, sometimes propose their own assignments. And then they'd do a write-up. And each one usually included a two to three page write-up on the assignment that they did. Some were shorter, some longer, depending on what they were doing. Oh, we need permission to view this. Is that possible that it won't play?
Where's Ray when we need him? Who knows that are on the computer?
You need permission.
Can I do that?
Okay, who did the sci, who did the computer science in the lab school?
I have to sign out. All right. I don't think it's gonna be a problem. I will just go on with the presentation from here then, in the interest of time. I can explain it too. I'm thinking, I'm thinking of senior presentations that went a bit the same way sometimes. We ran into this challenge last year when, in the transition to Google Slides, the internet was spotty one day and we had a student, we had to create a Wi-Fi hotspot to continue with the slides presentation. Can you full screen it for me? So Eva, actually, this is Eva Castanias' personal presentation, which is a lot of fun. She wanted to create a Rubens tube. So we did a little bit of research on what a Rubens tube was.
It's a feed to the.
Okay. That's good. So Eva created a Rubens tube. And I had no idea what a Rubens tube was, but working with her father, she actually took like a two-inch pipe and drilled a hole every inch, put a speaker in one end and then filled it from the center with propane. So you can actually see the gas line coming up into the center. Then they lit it. And they played music through the speaker. And it's a way to actually visualize soundlike waves. So she actually, when you play this, you can see the music dance across the flames, which is, I mean, it seems incredibly dangerous, but it was fantastic. She had, she sent me a bunch of different videos. I'd be glad to share them at a different time. And you can see like the cascades of the symbols as they come across the, basically, she wrote a whole paper about how the actual, the physics behind it, how the sound waves actually affect the output of the gas and how you can actually see the music, which is pretty interesting. So this is just, that was actually her own personal idea. The second one is the air-powered rocket launcher. We had some students this fall who were interested in rockets. And they went out and purchased their own rockets for, for STEM. So they, they did their own rocket launch. They measured the height of the rocket. They built a kit. But then, based on the student interest, I made an air-powered rocket launcher, which is based of a, it's a bicycle pump connected to a little pressure chamber made out of PVC with a garden sprinkler, sprinkler valve on it and a little detonation button that you can set at about 15 feet from the launcher. It's really simple to use, but the idea was that at no cost, we could launch hundreds of rockets and determine what factors actually affect rocket flight. And so we learned a lot through this in terms of center of gravity, learning about the center of pressure or center of friction. We learned quite a bit about aerodynamics. We have a whole data set that students have actually collected data on and put into this. And they, they've done a great job, basically like, looking at what factors affect the flight of rockets. And then from this, we have, we're moving into 3D printed rockets. I'm working with Mr. Neff, trying to get computers set up so students can actually print off cones, tubes, and basically print off their own fin cartridges for the rockets. And we can actually have students creating their own. And basically looking at the physics behind the launch itself. And it actually involves a little bit of math, trying to figure out how high the rocket actually launches. This one is actually created by a lab school, two lab school seniors built the plant stand. So this is a plant stand that we were actually using in reg, in regents level class. But they did, it's an artificial selection lab. So we started with Wisconsin pass plants, which are plants that grow from seed to basically full flower and back to seed again in about a little over a month. And they were able to go through three or four generations and actually artificially select for specific traits and increase those traits in population, which is a way to look at artificial selection, but also to kind of understand evolution. So we had some really great write-ups on that. And we've been able to use it and continually use the device that they created in, in other classes. We did guppy behavioral studies. We were looking at like sometimes mating behaviors with guppies. But in this particular study, a student was actually looking at how different tank situations would affect the movement of the fish. So you see like the tank on the left has nothing in it and the tank on the far right is very busy. So she was actually looking at stress levels in the fish based on, based on the amount of objects in the tank itself. It was a pretty interesting study. The next one, we just, these are really simple, but when it, when they get to, these are like, it's basically a child's toy, but you can take it to the next level. Students were able to design and build electrical circuits and then basically diagram them and explain how they worked, why they worked, looking at voltage and amperage at different places throughout the circuit. And then as an added challenge at the end, they had to design their own circuit to carry out a specific function and then actually build it. These are just really handy because they snap together and apart and they're super easy for students to do. So this might be like one of the five or six different assignments that students would do throughout the semester. We also have robotics. I think the one on the left and the right is Andre. He had a name specifically. He's a VEX robot who had specific programmed functions and took almost 300 lines of code to actually program. The one in the center is actually the Lego robot that we've used. And students can actually, I like because students can take it apart, put it back together. That robot actually made a trip over to Hammer Girl this year with four or five of our lab school STEM seniors who did a presentation to Hammer Girl students. And they were able to present not only the robot, but they actually presented on some of the coding that they did with code.org and presented that to the students as well. And then the last one is our step moving towards 3D printed rockets. And, you know, basically using the understandings that we have of the center of friction or pressure, the center of gravity, aerodynamics and everything from that, we're looking at, you know, possibly for next semester, building 3D printed rockets and then being able to launch them here at school, in our time after school effectively. And that brings us to, I'll let her present. And then if you guys have any questions, I will ask them or answer them in a minute. Ms. Leo. Ms. Leo's been doing this class now for two years? A year? This is your first year? So I'm gonna handle.
All right. So as Dave mentioned, this was really the idea of Dave Rounds. He developed the curriculum for this last year. He taught it over the previous school year. And I took it over this, the beginning of this, this current school year. But really, honors humanities is very similar to honors STEM. However, the content is obviously quite different. There are no flames or robots involved in humanities, however. It's just as interesting. So really, this course is intended to have students take a deeper look at how art, history, philosophy, religion and English all combine to really tell a story of the human experience. And one of the biggest goals here has to do with the skill levels of students. So of course, in lab school, they get a lot of experience in writing papers and giving formal presentations. But Dave Rounds and I talked about how sometimes it can be a bit of a challenge having a one-on-one conversation with a teacher. And once students get to college, they have to meet with professors in that individualized environment. So even just having an academic conversation with a teacher and a student from time to time can be an important educational experience for a lot of these students. And finally, the last bullet point up there, we like to challenge the students to think not only about these aspects of life and Western society, but also non-Western cultures, and how these different elements of society are reflected in the time and place in which they're created. So students are required to meet the 350 total points throughout the semester. The mandatory requirements there include choosing a book to read throughout the semester. Many students have gone the fiction route and have read classics that they don't typically get assigned in their English course, like Catch 22 or A Tree Grows in Brooklyn. However, there are many who opt to read nonfiction, current issue books like A Long Way Gone, which is about boy soldiers in Sierra Leone and their experiences, as well as Dark Money, which talks about the influence of, in, in politics today and the, and money and how that can completely change elections in our country. The other 50 points comes from weekly attendance. And as Dave mentioned with the STEM courses, early in the semester, I choose a day with a student, a particular free period they have or after-school session, to meet with them once a week to go over their progress on their book, or meet about a paper that they're working on, discuss where they are in the chapter in their book that they're on, or whatever projects they've completed up to that point. Beyond those 150 points, they have quite a bit of flexibility in where they want to go from there. So humanities one, there are a wide range of options that they can pick. Although it says requirements up there, they really are options. They can select which ones they want to choose to get them to the point requirements. So just as an example, the lecture is one that many students choose to go to. They can find a local lecture, whether it's at a college or another institution. Many attended the U Albany Writers Institute this year to hear different writers discuss their work. I know someone went to hear a cartoonist speak who draws for The New Yorker. Some people went to an Irish professor's lecture on modern Ireland at Sienna College. So they have a lot of flexibility there with their interests and what they want to hear more about. The art and music option allows them to examine a singer or an entire album in detail and try to come up with reasons why they would produce that music in the timeframe they produced it, why they, what topics they chose to sing about, how that reflects society in which that they lived. The historical option, they can interview someone who was a part of a major event in history, whether it was the assassination of JFK or the incidents on 9/11. The religious and philosophical options have them really dig deep into specific tenants of a religion they're interested in, or maybe even one that they follow, and try to think about the purpose behind it, how they maybe have seen it reflected in their own lives. And then lastly, the academic contest. There are so many institutions that offer contests to students, but they can be really demanding. And kids don't have the time to necessarily complete them. So if they have, if they can complete it for credit and possibly enter a contest that may lead to a scholarship at some point or another, many have chosen to do that as well. If they complete humanities one, they can move on to humanities two. Lecture assignment is the same as it is in humanities one. The museum requirement challenges them to go to a museum and think about why the curator set up the exhibit in the way that they did, how the artifacts help to tell a story. And if a message is reflected in those artifacts, what is the message? How would you design it differently if you were the curator? The documentary asks them to select a documentary of their choosing, consider if it's fair and balanced, if more research should have been done, what direction they could have taken, taken the documentary and if they were the ones producing it. And then the independent project is really the culminating assignment for this course, where, as Dave mentioned with STEM, it allows the students to pick something they're really interested in. And we sit down and talk about how they can produce some sort of final product that reflects what they learned in depth about any particular topic they choose. So I wanted to show a few examples here that I thought were really well done this past semester. So two students went to two different museums. One went to the New York State Museum to examine the Votes for Women exhibit about the struggle for suffrage throughout US history. Another went to the Met to examine European sculpture and decorative arts. And again, they reflected on how the exhibit's layout helps to convey a particular message. Other projects were examining the 13th documentary about the mass incarceration rates in the US, Gender Revolution by the National Geographic to examine the numerous issues related to gender in our country today. A student listened to and examined a lot of the Simon and Garfunkel albums and tried to analyze why they sang what they sang in the timeframe in which they did. Very similar to what another student did with Till It Happens To You by Lady Gaga about the, a lot of sexual assault issues that are happening in our country today. And another student interviewed her father, who's a police officer in Albany, about his experiences on 9/11. A few students entered the Foreign Policy Association contest where they had to explain what they think is the biggest foreign policy issue for the United States in current times. Someone else wrote a short story for a teen in contest about the realities of high school life. And then a few independent projects that really stood out this year. When we went to Silver Bay, a few girls presented on body image. And she led the lab schoolers through different exercises to improve body image and talked about how the media tends to perpetuate a lot of stereotypes about what is acceptable for boys and girls. Someone put together a presentation on introverts versus extroverts and how teachers could be more cognizant of the needs of both extroverted students and introverts. And then another pair of students who were in my participation in government class as well, decided to address how the country is dealing with economic inequality and how it's reflected in our society. And they're here, Adam and Greg. So if you guys want to come over and talk a little bit about how you set that project up, that would be helpful.
Hello, everyone. My name's Adam Winnie. I am a senior in lab school. And Greg and I, here, we, in the first semester this year, did a project on economic inequality in which we taught our participation in government class for an entire day on economic inequality by creating a simulation of the United States in our class. What we did was first did a lot of research on rates of economic inequality in different racial groups and also with different genders in the United States. And we tried to. And we tried to recreate the United States with our class of 24 people, 22 not including us. And we tried to give everyone a different set, whether it be a African-American woman or a white male, and how being of one of these ethnicities or genders kind of gave you an advantage in life. And we tried to simulate that as best as we possibly could in one class. And it was very confusing at first. It did take a lot of research for us to create this simulation of the entire United States and condense it to only 22 people in a 43-minute period. However, we came up very successful in that everyone walked away realizing that it was near impossible for some people to see success in their lives because they were put at different disadvantages at other people and they were not able to succeed. Whereas some who were born at such a great advantage had much more easy access to some of the steps that we took in our simulation, such as higher education and a job down the line. I'll let Greg talk a little bit more about our project.
Adam did a great job of an overview. Essentially, we did our best to make it as much of a fun character game as we could, like he said. So you were assigned a character in the beginning and then we tried to make it somewhat enticing by having them use a, like an odds app. So they, we put up percentages reflected off of research that we did from statistics provided by the Pew Research Center. And basically what you went through was depending on your character, you were loaded with statistics either stacked for you or against you, and you made your way through multiple scenarios. And the scenarios kind of represented a point system. And then in the end, we gave the winner a $7 gift card to McCarrals, which kind of accomplished our goal of upsetting the rest of our class perfectly. And after that, we had a lengthy discussion about kind of how we did our best to kind of show, you know, some, some were upset, some were obviously not like the person who won the gift card, but they were, they came into the game with either advantages or disadvantages that were out of their control, which was the point we were trying to convey to them. And it wasn't really their decision. Obviously, in real life, there are things you can do, but definitely in our modern world, there are things out of your control that you come into this world with that will affect the way you can move through situations in life, which will help you or not. And that, that went over really well with our class. Besides that, I think we should just do a quick run-through of the projects that we did, the ones that Ms. Leo didn't touch upon. I went to a, kind of a Q and A on a follow-up of a book of a man who was an interrogator in the Middle East in the early 2000s, which was very interesting. Like Ms. Leo shared, I went to the Women's Suffrage Exhibit. I did a lengthy dissection of Bob Dylan's The Times They Are A-Changin' and how it's kind of a timeless song and can always relate to where we are currently in the country. I watched, you saw the documentary requirement. I watched the 13th Netflix documentary, which kind of relates to how systematic oppression of African-Americans in the US really has only changed forms and moved in different ways in our country, beginning with slavery and ending today with the large issue of mass incarceration in the nation. I think it was perfect for me because I love lab school, I love humanities, but I want to spend more of my day learning about this kind of stuff. This is the kind of stuff that I, I really, I want to get into in the future. And this class gave me a platform for that, to go in all different sorts of directions of things that I really wanted to learn about, and I gained a lot of different things from that. Is that? Have anything to say? And a quick addition, sir. This kind of digresses, but if my class were asked what we had on our wish list recently, we've come across the issue that we are not getting graduation cords, which is, I understand, factors into a lot of situations. But considering that, not necessarily saying lab school is better than regular school, but the bar is set much higher for us in that we have to do, as you saw, 175 hours of an internship our senior year. We have to do 60 hours of community service, which is 40 more than the regular school. We have to go through a rigorous research process every year of our high school. And a graduation cord would be a small gesture, but it is important to our class. So I just wanted to mention that because, you know, I was sitting over there when you asked. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question, not necessarily about the projects in the, in the honors part, but when you talk about math and science, can people take accelerated math when they're in lab school?
Lab school students will take a math that's appropriate for their levels. So we actually have, we have math one, two, three, and four in lab school, which are effectively similar to what's in the traditional school. But if a student is advanced a year or so in math, they would just move up to, actually take the course with the, the lab school cohort a year ahead of them.
But can you double excel in math there?
We, we could as long as we can fit them in. As long as we can make their schedule work, we can put them in the class that they need to be in, so.
Okay, so meaning you might come out of the lab school and into the traditional school or you do it there?
After math four, a lot of, most students do. We have students in the room here who are taking math outside of lab school because they've, they're actually what would have been lab, lab school math level five. They're taking courses with Ms. Turner or Ms. Mahmood and so on. So yeah, they, they, they can. The biggest challenge is, double-advanced students, pretty difficult to schedule in because they would take class, like say a ninth grader came in double-advanced, they would take math with a junior. And there are other core classes being set at a particular period makes it difficult to schedule them.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. You really outlined the program, you know, in great detail.
Feel free to stop up anytime and ask us any questions. We're ready for them. We're doing everything we can up there to make it work and I think, I think it's heading in a really positive direction.
I am excited to see the changes that have come, especially the honors program. I had two students, two of, my son and daughter were, as Dave knows, were both in lab school. They got a great education there. But I think they would, if they had to do it over again, they would look at the honors program and, you know, sink their teeth into it. I think it's a great addition.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
I could see Leah in the humanities honors, no question.
I will invite the, the second student who spoke. If you want, come up and talk to me about what you're doing next year, because I know a lot of people doing that kind of work around the country, depending on where you're going. I can maybe give you some names. How about inequality and social justice?
I would love to.
Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you, thank you again.
Lynn, picking up on what Greg said, I don't know what the criteria is to do cords for students and, and how that determination would be made, but I think it's an excellent idea. And is it something that we can discuss and how is that done?
We can follow up with the high school administration. I'm not sure actually.
I think, didn't they, they give her cords, don't they, for them? I used to think that lab school.
I thought lab school had cords at one point and I don't.
You said to pay for them yourself. I mean, I, I remember the national, I mean, different groups within the high school give out cord, but the kids pay for themselves. I, I've been on commensments with kids who were in lab school cords. I mean, it may have been a while ago, but.
I have to follow up on it. It was the first I remember.
Next on the agenda is recognition of visitors who want to make a comment on, on the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to comment on the agenda? Seeing no one, okay. Move on, move on to the finance items. It is recommended that the Board of Education discuss and approve the following finance action items, one through four. So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just thank you for the donations.
Right. Thank you for the donations from the Sillings PTO and from Harriet Thomas for the music instruments or whatever. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, professional development. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 10. So move.
Second.
Again, any comments, any questions regarding these? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, item 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support action, support staff action items, one through 12. So move.
Second.
Any questions? I just have a question. Are these just alteration in hours or are they new positions?
No, they're just alterations in hours for next year.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number 11, other action, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action, item one. So move.
Second.
Again, any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, item 12, recognition of, of visitors for non-agenda, non-agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to approach the board for a non-agenda item? Hey, could you please use the mic and identify yourself, please?
Is this on? Okay. My name's Brad Rockline. I have three students in the school district at various levels, one elementary, one middle school, one high schooler. My high school is a sophomore at this point, so I've got limited experience with the high school, but after two years, I have some questions and a few concerns. But I'll, about, mostly about the structure of the school day, the, the way we schedule our, our classes, the ninth period day. I'm not sure this is the right venue that I should be at because I have some questions, some questions I'd like answered and I'm not sure if this is a give and take where I can get questions answered or if this is just public commentary. So if there is someplace I should go to get my questions answered, please direct me. But my concern is that we have a structured day where it's basically nine periods. Period one through eight is for classes and period nine is the so-called free period for extra help. My concern with that is that that condenses the schedule down to the eight periods, which makes it difficult, difficult to schedule lunches. And I was actually encouraged to see our core values being put up there and one of those values being wellness. I'm kind of curious if there's ever been a study done as to what the percentage of students are that actually take a lunch at the school versus not, and what the percentage of students are that actually take advantage of the ninth period free for the extra help, and whether the needs of a very small number of students are being met with the extra help period versus a very large percentage of students needs not being met by not being able to schedule a lunch. I'm also curious why we've adopted that schedule in the first place. I know years ago, that wasn't how we operated at the high school. I didn't go to school here, my wife did. I'm not sure when we adopted that schedule. I'm not sure why that was done. I'm kind of curious. I mean, I could go on and on about my concerns, but I'm kind of looking for.
So I would suggest that you schedule a time to meet with Mr. Domell, the principal of the high school. But in regards to the number of students who don't take a lunch, we actually did, was it last year you did a presentation on the number of students who opt to take a lunch or not take a lunch? We do have a large number of students who take advantage of the after-school time, not just for working with teachers, but also for club activities and other student events and student activities. Our counselors do encourage students to take a lunch. They don't need to take eight classes a day, but some students opt to. So, you know, I met with students this year, both sophomores and seniors, and many of the seniors said that, looking back, they think that was a mistake not to take a lunch. But certainly we think kids should have a break during the day. But if you want to.
I would argue that that is somewhat discouraged, given the culture at the school. Most kids, while given the opportunity to take a lunch, certainly if they want to, there's a pressure amongst their peers to take as many classes as you can, take as many advanced classes as you can, to, I would argue, succeed at all costs, if you will. I think we promote that culture in our school. I don't think it's healthy. And I understand, you know, teachers are instructed to allow kids to eat in class, but that isn't done effectively. Kids basically snack on unhealthy foods. No one, no one breaks out a healthy lunch during their classes. I mean, I, I could give a whole presentation as to why I think it's not.
Sure.
Healthy, but I don't know if this is the time or the place, but if I could start with understanding why we use that system, why it was changed to that in the first place. I know years ago, that's not how it was done. I'm not really sure I understand.
I think there were, because I, it's been around a long time. There were, and I'm trying to remember the term of the system. There were 20-minute.
Yeah, they had mods.
Mod, 20-minute mods. And, and the problem was as the school grew, at least this is what I heard at the time, was that it became very noisy. There was constant commotion outside the classrooms and I, I think the faculty felt that this was a more organized way of having the schedule. I'm sure there was more to it, but I, I remember hearing that especially. There's just so much movement all the time. But I also would suggest that, I think there's a healthy kids committee, correct? Is there another healthy, there's something called, I forget what they call it.
Yeah.
But, so there, there are ways for you to perhaps get involved and with different committees of parents who are working with administration to advance different thoughts and ideas. But, but there's no mandatory eight classes to take.
No. In fact, we don't encourage kids to take eight classes, but I agree. Here's, kids put pressure on other kids.
I would argue you could further promote that by mandating a lunch.
Well, that's been.
But, you know.
I mean, the thing I was saying is that the middle school and at the elementary schools, lunch is not optional, it's mandatory. You graduate high school, get a job, you work a full-time job, lunch is mandatory. As an employer, they have to give you period for lunch. So why is it for the four years you're in high school, it's not required?
Something the board can consider. Sure. Something considered, but also I think, you know, Ms. O'Nurle suggested, you know, start with talking to Mr. Domell.
Okay.
About the schedule and, you know, certainly it's something the board can consider.
Sure. And to talk to your kid, to be quite honest with you, my two kids, I told them you are taking, I, I told my kids, you were taking a lunch your freshman year. And my, I told my son you're taking it sophomore year too, and my daughter, by that time she was gone, but I, I told them they were taking that. So I mean, there's also, I think, a parental piece too.
I think we would get an equal amount of pushback from parents if we mandated a lunch period. How dare you tell my student they can't take an extra class?
But if we opened up ninth period to be a class period, then that would alleviate those pressures. Why, why can't we do that?
I think the argument, we said they'll fill it with another class. But I, I think you've raised some interesting points. I would encourage you to get more information and work with some of the parent groups and the, you know, board can definitely take it under advisement.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing, seeing no one. Future meetings, not June 6th, that's today's meeting, June 21st actually is the, June 20th, I'm sorry, is the next board meeting. We also have an audit committee meeting on Tuesday, June 12th. On Thursday, June 21st is the eighth grade moving up ceremony. And then Friday, June 22nd is graduation at the Times Union Center.
Can I just, that moving up ceremony time looks awfully early to me and maybe I'm just, can we just confirm that? Thank you.
That's what it usually is.
Is, really? Okay. All right, sorry.
Seeing no reason to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, participation in government students, come on up and sign on the sheets.